March 27, 2018, Wixom City Council Meeting. Please stand for the pledge.
Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The call, please.
Mayor Ziegler.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Beagle.
Here.
Councilmember Gachal.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Leader.
Here.
Councilmember Resnick.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Or Presson.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Mr. Brown?
Yes, Your Honor, I had a couple of things. The agenda, new business number one, we have a change in the description of that item that's reflected on a corrected agenda that was provided for Mayor and Council. And then the associated report is also changed with a correction that was reflected in the subject and in the recommendation.
Okay.
For mistake, it was in there procedurally wise, so those are the two that I had.
Okay. Anything to add up here? Okay. First thing on the agenda this evening is a public hearing, and the public hearing regarding the 2018 to 2023 Parks and Recreation Master Plan Revision. I guess what we'll do is have some discussion about what it's all about, and then we'll read the rules for the public hearing and invite the public to weigh in on it.
Good evening.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to mention, I try to remember to mention this, but we have Wald Lake Schools here this evening taping our meeting, just so that everybody is aware of it. Go ahead, Deanna, sorry.
Tonight, we're here to conduct a public hearing for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The master plan basically provides a plan that outlines general direction for the development of the community parks and recreation programs, and also provides statistics of demographics, goals, action plans, and future. We are also required by the Department of Natural Resources to update our plan every five years in order to be eligible for grants.
I can just say one thing, too. At the public open house that we had for the master plan, the two of them, we also had a component in there for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, so we presented this information at that time also.
So there wasn't one individually just for this, but it was combined with the other?
Yes, correct, and that makes sense, since one of the components of the master plan is Parks and Recreation, so it made sense to pull them together. There was a separate table for it, but I'll roll into that on purpose.
Your Honor, if I may.
Yes.
I was going to request that Mr. Avantini or Ms. McGee does a summary of the changes that are reflected in the update, if that would be something you could provide.
Of course. Most of the changes you'll see in the master plan when we do the updates is in the back of the plan. It's called the Five-Year Action Plan. That's where we update projects that we've completed, add new projects, or add new input that's come from Parks and Recreation or the public input sessions. So some of the major ones that were already done and deleted out of the plan were like the roadway paving at Gunner Metal habitat, some of those projects, the Gibson projects that were done, those were deleted out of the plan because they've been completed. Escape Park was deleted out per Parks and Rec, and a splash park put in in the five-year plan.
Okay. Having said that, if there's nothing else to add, I'll open up, before I open up the public hearing, I'll read the rules for the public hearing. "Person who is desiring to address the council shall state their name and address. Individual persons shall be allowed five minutes to address the council. There shall be no questioning by the audience of persons addressing the council. However, the council members may question persons addressing the council. No person shall be allowed to address the council more than once." Those are the rules for public hearing. And again, we're here to discuss the input regarding the 2018 to 2023 Parks and Recreation Master Plan Revision. Anybody like to address the council this evening with anything regarding the master plan revision of the Parks and Recreation? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of March 13, 2018. Do I have motion?
Move.
Support.
Motion and a support. Any discussion, corrections, deletions, additions, comments, compliments, anything? I have a motion and a second to accept the regular scheduled city council meeting of March 13, 2018. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. There were two items of correspondence. One is the Oakland County Homeland Security Division siren test results. We got As on all of them, I believe. And two was the Great Lakes Water Authority Public Hearing Notice, Water Conveyance System Fiscal Year 2019 Drinking Water Revolving Fund Projects. The next item on the agenda is the first call to the public. And I'll read the rules for the first call to the public. "The public shall address the council during the call to the public, which shall be included in the agenda immediately after correspondence and again immediately after new business. The first call to the public immediately after correspondence shall be limited to agenda items only. A person shall not address the council in excess of five minutes unless the time is extended by a majority vote of council present. Persons wishing to address the council shall identify themselves and their place of residence and shall state their reason for addressing the council. All comments by the public shall be made directly to the council." Does anybody have any comments they'd like to make regarding any agenda items this evening? Seeing no one, I'll close the first call to the public. Next item on the agenda are the city managers' reports. We have the department reports of February, from February 2018. Does anybody have any questions regarding? Mr. Beagle.
Thanks. I've got one for the deputy building official. Is the Wings, et cetera, how's that going right now?
Good evening. Wings, et cetera, the permits were issued today, but the owner of the Wings, et cetera, is changing his plans. He's reducing his occupant load to his outside seating area from 72 down to 30, and that will require a review process. So he's back into the review process. I'm at the 11th hour on his work.
How long will that take?
That should only take a couple of days because...
Okay, so they could open sometime this summer realistically?
Yeah, he's ready to build. It's just the process is to resubmit the drawings, make the changes in affidavits required for the occupant load change. It's just paperwork.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Mr. Resnick.
Just a question on the water report. The, oh, there we are. Hey, Matt.
Evening.
Evening. And the issue with the skimmer.
Yeah.
The, I know that the MacGyver, very clever, by the way, MacGyver fix to get the thing working during those frozen times. Is there a permanent fix that?
It's fixed.
It is fixed?
It's fixed.
So a new arm, new skimmer arm was installed, or?
No, we had to go actually drain the tank down. Actually, the weld had broken at the base, so we resupplied the well, so now it's level again. And then Friday, we reused the existing one, cleaned it up and tightened it up, installed some new hardware, but it's in service now.
And the, in terms of that, and the EQ has to come back out again and re?
No, we've been in pretty good constant communication with our DEQ rep, and he's aware of the current situation. So he's up to date, as of today, with what's going on in the plan.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? Mr. Gachal.
Thank you. For planning zoning, just regarding the note in here for the car wash at Alphatac and Alpha Court, is there going to be signage from Wixom Road, or is that visible, is that going to be open to the public? Just seems like it's tucked back a little ways from kind of the main drag.
Yes, and actually, we did discuss with them the possibility of doing joint signage with the Minimark at the intersection of Alpha Drive and Wixom Road. They haven't come to us with anything yet. We did talk about that, but it will be a full service, fully operating. We did quiz them on that, fully operating car wash. It is going to be owned and operated by the company that manufactures the equipment here in Wixom. And, but yeah, we talked about the signage issue, but they haven't come back to work that out yet.
It just seems like an oddball spot, because it's not road frontage like you see with all the other car washes around town, so.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member wishes so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and added to the regular agenda at the end of unfinished or new business. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Support. I have a motion and support. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. There is no unfinished business, which takes us to new business. The first item under new business is the one that was referred to earlier. It's changed off the initial agenda. It's a recommendation to approve the 2018-2023 Parks and Recreation Master Plan Update and adopt the attached resolution. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Support.
Discussion. Anybody? Mr. Resnick.
Just comment, great job. I think the public input session was very, very helpful. I attended it, and it was nice to see John there from the Michigan Airline Trail as well, because I think within this five-year timeframe, one of the biggest recreational developments that our city will see is the development of that trail, along with the other two participating communities. And I think Wixom being, the trail being so close to our VCA and a lot of our local businesses and even the new residences, has an opportunity to create one of the best trailheads that, you know, we've got in the state of Michigan and really showcase that, so it's exciting. And the idea of, you know, taking off some of those older initiatives, like the swimming pool and all that, and putting the splash parks, you see them popping up in communities all over Michigan. If you go to Charlevoix, I've seen them in Muskegon, I've seen them recently in Grand Rapids as well. And they're, they seem very effective and well-attended by the local community, so good job.
Anyone else? Mr. Gachal.
Thank you. I did have a question about the master plan for 2018. It talks about a new restroom pavilion for Sibley Square Park. Where's that plan to go, or?
It's just a future, the Parks and Rec, that came from the Parks and Rec Commission as far as they wanted that in the plan if there was ever any opportunity to do that. But speaking with planning, it doesn't look like that's going to happen.
Okay.
That was their goal.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Thanks, Deanna. We have a motion to approve the 2018-2023 Parks and Recreation Master Plan Update and to adopt the attached resolution. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consideration of a resolution authorizing the city manager to pursue the sale of surplus city property at 2906 Schubert in accordance with Chapter 3.16. That's the disposition of real property of the Code of Ordinances. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Support.
Mr. Brown, want to give us a little background on this?
Just a piece of property that the city was awarded possession of, if you will, through a tax foreclosure situation. We previously asked if there were anybody, if there were any parties that would be interested in purchasing the property. There were none. However, with the passage of time, there's been a change in ownership from somebody who is deceased to somebody else that was now interested in potentially purchasing that property or taking possession of that property from the city. And the intent of this resolution is just consistent with the charter to give me the authority to negotiate a deal, so to speak, to bring to Mayor and Council for turning that piece of property over potentially to the private sector, again, individual owner.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Kennedy.
Since this was a tax sale, is this the kind of thing where when we sell it, we give back to Oakland County everything over and above what we paid?
We paid zero, so no, this is different. It was given to us. It went through the two, the full cycle of a tax foreclosure sale. No one bought it, and so at that point, after whatever 90-day period, they award it to the city for nothing. And so we can sell it, you know, we can give it away for a dollar, whatever we see fit.
Okay. Just, what is that situation where Oakland County gives us a piece of property and we have to, we have to reimburse them anything over a dollar amount?
That's when we buy something out of, in, out of tax foreclosure. The city goes to the state first, the first option to purchase, county second, and the city or jurisdiction third. And in the case of a couple of properties, we have purchased them for the outstanding tax amount. When that happens, then we can only sell it for the amount that we purchased it for, plus any money that we have invested in the property.
And you're, I think it is technically correct. If we sell it for more than that, the money is turned back into the county?
Both, both for county.
Right.
By the fact that they gave it to us, we don't have to worry about giving them all the money then?
Okay.
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to pursue the sale of surplus city property at 2906 Schubert in accordance with Section 3.16.050 of the Code of Ordinances. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the annual review of city-owned property and determination of a use classification for the city's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 3.16.
So move. Support.
There's nothing to move on, actually. We're just looking for a report, I guess, or review. You want to give us a kind of a rundown, or? I'm sorry.
No, 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 I, I'm out.
There's nothing to...
No.
Yeah, so annually, according to our charter, we're to review the classifications of each of these properties. We're just, I'm recommending that we carry over what we decided on last year. There's really, we moved a few last year into economic development. We were able to sell a couple of those, and so right now, I think as it stands, there's really nothing that we need to make any changes on.
You don't need any motion or anything. Just continue, carry on. Mr. Resnick.
I just had one question. I remember the two lots that, but Birch Park, and we had a talk that one time about, and I think it's even in the master plan, about a potential fishing platform for residents, more of a passive use area. That, it looks like the color coding on the map is still economic development and not parkland. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Because they're still considered residential lots, then?
Yes, and there has been inquiries on those from residents that live around that area, some thinking that on Belconie that they would give them access to the lake.
Oh, they're...
And so I've had discussions over the last, you know, 10 years, I'll say, regarding that, so, you know, we could make that parkland, you know, park at some point. I'd have to look at the, how the charter reads on putting something into park.
And I think those are the only two lots that are city-owned, correct?
In that area?
In that area?
Well, we own all the wetland out to Wixom Road there. There's quite a bit of property that we own.
Okay, so there are...
But there are two singular lots, yes.
But those are still part of the planned subdivision, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a request to waive the bid, to waive the competitive bid process and extend the contract for the city's heating and ventilation and air conditioning maintenance to the current provider, BNC 10 Air HVAC Systems, Inc. of Milford, Michigan, for two additional years for $6,501.88 the first year and $6,566.90 the second year. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Support.
Why don't you give us a rundown on that?
So this, this is in 2015, DPW requested bids for all of the maintenance here at the city, and we received bids from several, several different companies at that time, and that bid included a five-year, actually a three-year contract with two additional years, you know, requested. And in 2015, the original recommendation was only for the first three years, and we admitted the final years. In the base of the report, or in the report itself, it didn't include that, but we didn't put it in the recommendation, so we're going back and requesting the second, or the fourth and fifth year based on all of the bids that came back, back in 2015.
So if I may, Your Honor? Yes. Just flesh that out a little bit. Two things that I would make additional comment on. The reason for the, for the recommendation to proceed in this manner is twofold, I guess, from my perspective. If we had done the report in the first place with this fourth and fifth year, it would have been something where we would have evaluated the prices at the time, seen a substantial difference of over $3,000 per year, and gone with the option to extend, built into the recommendation at that time, for whatever reason that wasn't done. So I think that was, as it turns out, a mistake here, because we had the opportunity to lock in those savings for an additional two years. So that's the first thing. If we had done the report back in the day in that manner, we wouldn't have to face the situation of having to technically waive the competitive bid process. And I mentioned that it's a technicality, because if we had done it that way, we wouldn't have the issue. But we did not, so we do have the issue of having to refer to it as a waiving of the competitive bid process. That's the first item. Secondly, if you look at the cost differential, it's substantial between the proponent, if you will, that was awarded the contract, and the company that we're recommending to extend with for two additional years. The difference between that price from that company and the second lowest bidder is substantial. It's nearly 50% price differential. So the thought being that we're not going to realize any benefit from going out for a bid process on this, and that's why the recommendation was made the way that it was.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any questions, comments?
Just a comment. I went, after reading this agenda item last week, I went and looked at my own maintenance contracts in my commercial buildings, and I think it's very fair. On the preventative maintenance, though, are they doing proactive preventative maintenance where they're coming in, going up on the roof, blowing out the cotton wood out of the coils and inspecting the belts?
They're inspecting the belts, they're washing the heat exchangers, and yeah, they're blowing out the, the...
The cotton fuzz.
Fuzz and that kind of stuff, and replacing the, and replacing all the filters.
So the filters are all rooftop mounted?
Yep. Filters are replaced twice a year on most, on just about all the units. And yeah, they also wash them once a year.
Okay, I think it's a very fair price.
I think so, yes.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion to waive the bid process and extend the contract to the city's heating and ventilation and air conditioning maintenance to the current provider, BNC 10 Air HVAC Systems of Milford, Michigan. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thanks, Tim. Next item on the agenda is request for authorization to participate under the MyDeal State Contract with Graphic Sciences of Madison Heights, Michigan, for electronic archiving of construction and development services documents, and for an amount not to exceed $45,000. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Support.
Discussion. Want to have a brief presentation first, but you want to make any comments on this, or?
Yeah, just as a quick overview of why we're here, we have a situation where the city and the Construction Development Services Department instituted some technological advancements, including a scanner that allows us to have electronic storage of documents. There's a variety of benefits to the electronic storage of the documents. Things do fade that are on paper. There is a reaction with ink and paper over a period of time that causes the quality to sometimes become problematic after a period of time. It was never available in the past, but we purchased the equipment to make that a reality these days, and we do have the ability to scan those documents. The process of utilizing that equipment started with Construction and Development Services personnel, city employees, doing the scanning of incoming documents as work comes into the department. So that was the first step, and that's ongoing and continues to this day. We instituted a fee in relation to this switch to cover the cost of obtaining the equipment and also to cover the cost of getting the documents into this electronic storage system, because there's ongoing costs, and then there's going to be historical costs that we're going to experience, too. So we do have a fee in place. That's been in place for a few years now, and we've collected an amount that is slightly in excess of the amount that we're putting in the not-to-exceed figure of $45,000 that is available to cover activity. So we've been doing the day-to-day scanning, but the thing that we want to do with this monies and with this company is to have them come in and begin with the information that's on-site in Construction and Development Services. So we've been retaining files for the last so many months, so many periods, so many months of time, and they're going to come in and scan that information into the, into the imaging system, and we'll have the ability to retrieve those documents electronically, and that's beneficial to us for a variety of reasons that's listed in the report. So that's going to be the next step. The step after that is going to our off-site storage facility where we've archived things already. We'll request, or the company will request boxes back from that off-site storage and then begin the process of also scanning those and entering those into the imaging system. So those two steps are what's in front of us next. The $45,000 figure is the money that's available. We're going to have more than enough work to utilize that amount of money based on the documents that we have off-site and the documents that we have on-site to be addressed. So we looked at that and came to the conclusion that we want to work with this Graphic Sciences company because of the fact that we have experience with them. They had been working through an existing vendor of the city in the past when we started to do our first tests of the system, and we've done a little bit of work through them as a subcontractor to a company that is our imaging provider, if you will, our copier provider. Now, because they have this MyDeal arrangement, and because we're going to start to do substantial work under this kind of arrangement, we want to go through this MyDeal contract to work out this arrangement between Graphic Sciences directly, and they have a fee schedule that was consistent with what we were paying under the old schedule as well, so their pricing is consistent. It's like an $18 million contract they have with the state, so we get the benefit of that. And when we've used MyDeal in the past, that's been an acceptable alternative to doing our own bid process, so that's why the recommendation's made the way that it is.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought at one time we had a deal with SafeBuild when they first came in to do all our image, document imaging and storage. In fact... In fact, I was under the impression they were going and getting those boxes and taking those out and doing the digitizing of those particular documents, which you are now saying have to be done again.
I'm not aware of any arrangement where, where SafeBuild was going to handle that. We can refer to Ken Pike, our deputy building official here, to see if he's got any historical knowledge that I'm lacking on that.
I, I, I don't recall any agreement.
Is Dennis still around because...?
Dennis is still around.
Okay, he's not here tonight.
So the reason I would say that's unlikely is it's pretty, it's a very time-consuming process when you're doing this.
I had talked to Ken, I had talked to Dennis himself, and he told me that he found, when he came in, that there was plenty of work and that they were doing it. In fact, they had brought on an intern to help process, do the process of digitizing that, that work. This looks like a duplication to me of what was said to me at that time.
And was that included in the cost of the arrangement with SafeBuild? Or was it added at a cost?
I remember that right offhand, but I just remember that they were supposed to be doing our digitizing and everything that was going through the building department. So I, this makes me wonder if there's some way to go back and get the documents. I should have went back and, and checked the minutes way back when, but I did not. So...
There's no sense of urgency on this other than the fact that this, you know, getting it done sooner is beneficial from an operational standpoint. So if you, if you're interested in that answer, I'm more than happy to have a conversation with Dennis Smith about that and then bring it back for another consideration another time, if that's...
Well, if there's, if there's no sense of urgency, I would ask the rest of our council if we could just wait a little bit, just to see, because it was discussed before, the digitizing and for the documentation going through the building department. I'm not talking about putting it out a great period of time. Just let's, let's see if, if we can look and see if there's any of these documents that are there. I, I could be mistaken, but this was discussed a long time ago.
I can only theorize as to, if that did, if, if that in fact was the arrangement to begin with, why it could have been changed from an operational standpoint, so I won't do that. As I say, it's, it's not an issue to hold it for two weeks.
If we can, since Carmen's here, Carmen, are you familiar with anything that was supposed to have happened back in the building department with bringing in new plans and stuff and digitizing the new documents when they came in through the building department?
No, actually, I'm not, I wasn't involved.
The only thing I could say is maybe it's related to incoming documents, and instead that shifted to, to on-staff employees of the city. But I can double-check it again, I'm just guessing at this point.
As it stands right now, the new documents are scanned and installed in the system as they come through.
Right.
The $45,000 is for documents that have been...
Offsite.
Offsite and here in the city hall.
Historical is how I refer to them, things that haven't been handled yet.
Like I said, I just, you know, I just, just something that I tend to remember that was said a long time ago. So again, it's my fault for, you know, not going back and checking on it when I saw this. But if it's possible, just to let it wait till maybe to, to, two meetings from now. If, if possible, I'm not going to make a motion.
Since there's no urgency, probably the easiest thing to do would be to, to have whoever made the motion withdraw the motion, and whoever made the second withdraw the second. You can go back and check contracts and talk to people and bring it to us another day.
And since I'm the one questioning it, you know, I'll go back and try and find it myself also, since I'm the one bringing that up, not to put the whole onus here on the city manager.
We're happy to check it out, but that's fine. If you have some historical information, it would add to the discussion, certainly. The only downside to this would be if we lost the benefit of the contract, and that's not an issue. Their contract does expire at a point in time, but as long as we contract with them, prior expiration, they will extend the pricing under the contract until we finish the work.
If we were to look at this within one month, two months from now, that would not be a problem.
Not at all.
Okay.
Mr. Smiley?
I think I'm the one who's, who...
And the onus is on you.
So I'll withdraw the motion. I do have a couple of questions if we can keep the discussion a little bit longer.
Sure, don't withdraw it then.
Don't, don't withdraw it yet.
All right, when I'm done, then I'll do that.
There you go.
So in October of 2014, you know, we set up this account to, you know, collect the collective archive, archive and storage fee. How, what, how, I can read the account number, but I think you have it there. What, what amount is in that account now?
The amount is, I want to say between $46,000 and $47,000. That's why I chose the $45,000 as a safe number that is...
That's where you got the $45,000?
Correct.
Okay, great.
That's the funding that's available in the account currently.
Okay. And this is based on the tra, on the track of about, you know, two years, almost three, we've been getting about $17,000 into that account.
Right, which is far in excess of what we estimated, which is good news for the city because that means we've been busier in the building department and Construction and Development Services Department, so...
Okay. And then if, you know, if this all works out, if someone pays for it, we'll let that collect up a little more to do another batch of the archive. Yes, that's the plan.
Correct.
If we haven't found it, you know, a redundancy here.
Right, if we get, if we get this approved, that's the plan. We'll use this $45,000, which could go pretty quickly from what I'm told based on the, the company's timeframe for, for doing work. Could be a matter of just a few months. If that gets accomplished, then we wait for additional funding to become available for the next batch, as you said.
And there's, is this decades' worth of documents that need to be, that need to be collected?
Yes.
Okay, so it's, it's...
They're going to be busy for a while potentially if we can continue to fund it and continue to bring that work forward.
And, and final question. Will this, will this new method take a load off of the CDS of, of work? But they're still doing the day-to-day stuff that's coming in?
What I think it will do for us is just increase the speed and accessibility of information when we need to, when we need to look for something. For example, if we have to go to something that's off-site, you have to put in a request to the off-site storage company to, to, to retrieve a box, bring it back to us. It takes a period of time for that to happen. Then we have to sift through the box to find what we're looking for. Then we have to send it back to off-site storage, and that just creates potential issues for misfiling of things. It creates issues of timeliness. So the things that are listed here, we're going to reduce our storage needs onsite. We're going to reduce our fees for off-site storage once we convert these documents to electronic images and can no longer pay to store them off-site. So there's going to be some cost savings. It's going to be better access. It'll allow us to do some certain things quickly, more quickly, such as FOIA requests. I think it'll facilitate quicker responses on those. Variety of benefits.
But new business five is to get the, you know, the, the legacy information. The current, the stuff that comes in currently is still being handled by the good folks in the CDS.
Correct, that's accurate, yep.
All right, with that, I will...
Oh, you don't, oh, sorry. You have another question?
Just to build on what you were saying, you mentioned that we need to jump on this before the contract expires. If we do that, we blast through our $45,000, and then the contract expires, are we still grandfathered into the pricing? Or no?
I think the technical, technical answer on that would be no, but I'm not tremendously worried about our exposure on that for a couple of reasons. First of all, I mentioned that, that we'll be able to get this approved under this existing contract. I'm confident if, as long as council wants to approve it. But in the longer run, this company's had this contract for a long period of time. The states already extended it multiple times with this company, so they've been very satisfied with them, and I think their pricing is pretty competitive. So, you know, if there is, if there ends up being a slight increase under the contract, it, I don't think it's going to be a massive increase. It's just going to be sort of inflationary.
But it wouldn't be a new vendor then?
I, I don't think so, no, not based on prior history with the state, no.
Okay.
They continue to extend with this company, which is consistent with our experience. As I said, we had some experience with them as well. We're very happy with them. It's kind of a specialized deal, right? Because of getting the knowledge of the documents that you're dealing with, the knowledge of the system that you're using to scan them. There's some specialized knowledge that's in play. And I, I think that that will be something that gets extended. I have a feeling, again, by the state.
Okay.
Now, anybody else? Okay. No?
Just really like to withdraw my motion to... Sure. What's that?
Number five. And who had the, you had a second?
Oh, you had a question, oh.
Oh, I was the first one with a question. Do I have to read? I was going back to the benefit of digitizing. February 28th of last year, we extended the SafeBuild contract. So that has the extension and full contract. I'm not seeing anything in there right now, but I'm just doing a quick read-through while everybody else talks, so it's worth kind of going through again. But I, my, my main question again is this isn't going to be something where we have to review it or, and not review, but renew in the future? This will be something that catches us out? Basically, if five years down the road, we're not going to say that's put all of the other money that we've been saving or not saving and do this again?
The way that I would summarize this, I've done this as a not-to-exceed figure. I didn't leave it open-ended because I don't really think that's a good practice. So I did a not-to-exceed figure, which has the $45,000, which is roughly the amount that's available currently. We are indeed going to come back for additional approvals to do additional work because we have massive amounts of data off-site that we're going to continue to address as money becomes available. I foresee this as something that would continue for probably a, a period that would be best described as years in length when you're collecting the amount of money that we're collecting and the amount of documents that we have to do. You know, if we were to allocate a lump sum to it to try to, try to wrap everything up in one time, I suppose that could be an option, but I have a feeling it would be something that would be pretty onerous from a financial standpoint. So I think we're going to continue to bring this back on a once-a-year basis, saying, now that we've collected another, make it up, $15,000, $16,000, whatever the dollar amount it ends up being, let's do another piece of work with whatever vendor is appropriate at the time to get more documents scanned into the system. So it's going to be an ongoing effort.
Do you, I know it said that kind of the average has been $17,000 a year. Do you know what in total is allocated right now to that project?
There's, there, what I would, no. What's available is the forty, it's roughly $46,000, $47,000. So we're spending $45,000 of that right now if we, once we get approval on this eventually, hopefully. So that's what we're going to be spending right now. I will try to come up and see, see what we can find out from, from the off-site storage if there's a way for an estimate of what the number of documents are. I have a feeling that's going to be pretty tough to come up with a realistically accurate estimate, but I will try to do that to see if we can figure out, do we think this is going to be an X number a year process with the amount of money that we're collecting and the number of documents that are off-site? I'll try to come up with an analysis on that, but I don't have that information right now.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? No.
I'd just really like to withdraw my motion for new business five till we can clear up some of the questions.
Who did the second?
I believe I did, and I withdrew the second.
Very good. Then the city manager's guided his direction, and we'll revisit it again some other time.
Do we need to make a motion to table or anything like that? Are we good? I didn't, I didn't ask for a table, so I just...
No, okay.
We'll just withdraw which answer.
Probably the cleanest way to do it.
Very good.
Next item on the agenda is the second call to the public. The rules for the call to the public, I'll review again. The public shall address the council during the call of the public, which shall be included on the agenda immediately after correspondence and again immediately after new business. The first call to the public immediately after correspondence shall be limited to agenda items only. A person shall not address the council in excess of five minutes unless the time is extended by the jury of the council present. Persons wishing to address the city council shall identify themselves and place their, and say their place of residence, and shall state their reason for addressing the council. And all comments by the public shall be made directly to the council. Does anybody wish to... Oh, wait, 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 wait. Are you students? Are you here for credit or...? You're not? Oh, well, okay. You dodged a bullet then.
We appreciate your interest.
I think they might have heard some from somebody. All right, I guess you can't arrest them. I'm like, we, we don't have just cause there, do we? Darn, looking for a little something to do tonight. Anybody want to come up and talk to the public then? Since, yes, please come up.
Good evening, my name's Roy Thorcell, T-H-O-R-S-E-L-L. I live at 3207 Pot Row. So I just wanted to follow up on the meeting from last night with the planning commission. A lot of people were here. So I think the motion or the, the recommendation to city council will be to deny it, I think based off of the technicality. So I want to know, when's the follow-up, or when is that on the agenda for you guys to actually vote on that to say yea or nay?
I really don't know. Is there a, a possible way to predict that or...?
Typically, that would move pretty quickly. It's, it certainly wouldn't be on the first meeting in April agenda just based on the, the timing of things, but it might be on the second one, and that would be dependent on whether anything happens in the meanwhile. But if nothing else changes, that would go to council probably at the second meeting in April, more than likely.
Okay.
You'll, there'll be notice of it, and we'll make sure that we, we certainly make that clear to people. Because I know that's obviously an item of great deal of interest to the...
Yeah, I think, I think myself and a lot of the families just want to keep a lot of heat on that subject, so if I'm not here in person, I'll make sure somebody else is. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Peterson, 1425 Wren Street, Wixom, Michigan. And basically talking about the same issue and wondering if there could be better communication with the community about when this item will come before the city council. There was very little communication to the public about the planning commission meeting, and only through voice communication did we get the number of people that we had at that meeting, which was a very good turnout. I think it's an issue that is not just a little minor rezoning for the city. I think it's a major issue. I think it could set some precedent and different items. So I tried to, I'm going to try to put out some word. I came tonight just wondering if anything would be happening tonight and would have had the same question as the previous gentleman. So if, I don't know if it's a matter of maybe posting it on the rotating sign out here, not just that there's a city council meeting, but that the rezoning was going on or some other way that our communication with different subdivision heads, so they can spread the news, but just some way to get that, that information out to the whole city of Wixom, I think, would be appreciated by a lot of the people. So that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? No, and I'll close the second call to the public. City manager's comments. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things I wanted to make mention of. I'll highlight a couple of things from the report. We had road commission of Oakland County that has, has received additional funding from the state that's going to be implemented to do some additional work in terms of addressing pothole problems in, in Oakland County and in the city of Wixom as well. There was an additional $175 million that was provided. The road commission of Oakland County's share was $7 million, and they're putting $4 million of that into preservation overlay and $3 million into spot resurfacing and concrete repair. And it's predicted that this is going to make a serious dent in the pothole problem in the county, which should bring some relief to a lot of people that are experiencing issues in that regard, as, as all of us do. So that's one item that I was going to make mention of. All kinds of individual things of recognition for employees, but I also wanted to make mention that Crystal Alpolco attended the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks three-day master program. She just wrapped that up, and I saw her certificate today, so I wanted to say congratulations to her for completing that program. Then the other thing that I was going to make mention of relates to something that was brought up in the goal session, the Hope Not Handcuffs program that was brought up by Councilman Gottschall and has been brought up in the past as well. That is what I would describe as being in the stage of implementation. One of the things that becomes part of that program is a group of people known as angels that allow people that come into the police department to basically report that they have an addiction problem, and they want to get that addiction problem addressed. So instead of dealing with that in a, some sort of a punitive fashion or something akin to that, the idea is that these people would then be diverted into the Hope Not Handcuffs program. The police department would contact one of the people on the list of angels that would be available in the community. These are typically people who've had their own issues related to addiction issues, and they, they're experienced in the program, they're trained independently of the police department. They would come in and assist that individual with getting into the program, finding a rehab facility and things of that nature. So positive rehabilitation type of efforts as opposed to anything punitive. So the next step is to come up with a, a critical mass, if you will, of angels. So there'll be some attraction efforts, some solicitation efforts to get people to be part of our network for that purpose that will go out. And from there, when somebody comes into the police department, And from there, when somebody comes into the police department, they'll make that phone call to one of those angels and have them into the program and avoid a negative outcome but hopefully have a positive outcome. The people that would be interested in that, I encourage people that would be interested in serving in that role in that program that we're committed to implementing, you go to the Hope Not Handcuffs website, which we'll provide on the website. I didn't look it up before I got here unfortunately because it just dawned on me to do this report. So, I will come up with the website address for people, but it's the Hope Not Handcuffs Program that you would basically contact and indicate your interest in serving as an angel and they would intake you into the program, get you some training and get you started. So, that's going to be coming soon, just as soon as we can get the right number of people, the required number of people on that angels list.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, our council comments. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some questions and it's regarding the exact what the gentleman in the audience were talking about. On rezoning situations, don't we put signs out on the property stating that there's going to be a zoning meeting going on or don't, and don't we also send out letters to anybody within three hundred feet of the property?
No, Mr. Kennedy, the ordinance requires that the applicant put a sign out for rezoning and it's very clear it's the responsibility of the applicant to do that. And when the planning commission asked him last night why they did not do it, his response that was it was an honest oversight, so that was their response, but it is their responsibility, not the city's, to put the sign in.
What about the three-hundred-foot rule? Doesn't the city do that?
Yes.
Did the city do that?
Yes.
We did send out letters?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, and just so you're aware, sometimes there are folks who are interested beyond the three-hundred feet, but we have to be consistent according to what the law says. We can't go five-hundred because there's more interest than case, we have to keep it at three-hundred, but obviously we can look for other ways to let people know. And on this particular request, because it's a planned unit development, there will be a public hearing also at the city council level. And so, obviously there's going to have to be legal notification put in the paper for that and we will probably also have to make sure we have adopted minutes prior to that meeting also.
So, are you saying then that this whole thing's been turned back until he decides to put the sign out there and state that they're, are they going to just let that one slide?
No, actually the, and we did ask the city attorney today if the sign, although it's required, if that's a sticking point in terms of do we have to go back and do it all over again, and she indicated that we did not, that it continued, it can continue to move forward to the city council. But in terms of, it's a different public hearing, there is a legal notice required for the city council separate from the sign being placed out on the property.
Interesting, thank you, Mr. Comment. Other than that, I'm, I'm, thank you. Other than that, I have no comments, thank you, sir.
Sure. Mr. Leader.
Just briefly, I heard about the meeting last night and the overwhelming participation. Just wanted to say that, you know, I appreciate the citizens of Wixom coming out, participating and that's what government's about, that's about it. Thank you. Mr. Gottsch?
I don't have any comments right now, thank you.
Mr. Resnick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to say I attended the State of the Lakes address luncheon this afternoon and very encouraging to hear what's going on in the communities around the Lakes area and we got a lot of great stuff going on here in Wixom, so that was one of the things I took away from it. We had a lot of good things going on. Congratulations to Crystal as well, keep going and get that certified clerk, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smiley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This council met last week for a special goal-setting session. It gave us a chance to simply talk to each other about ideas for the city. It was a time we don't always have, you know, here in our regular council meetings. We discuss short, medium, and long-term goals as well as some wish list type ideas. I just wanted to reiterate to all of you how much I enjoyed it and the discussion and along with more like it, it would be a benefit to the city. I also, earlier today, along with several other of us, attended the State of the Lakes luncheon, our very own Mayor Ziegler, he gave a very nice speech. I'd like to thank the Lakes Area Chamber for the event and without going into a lengthy recap of all the various reports by community leaders, things are looking very well in our area and the future looks bright. Perhaps the chamber posts minutes, or I saw a video camera there of the event, we could put that up on, you know, our site or put it out the way we put things out. I think folks in Wixom would be interested. Also, we have a very special guest in the audience, I must recognize, my mother is in the audience, longtime Wixom, Trudy Smiley. All else I can say is, where's dad? Other than that, happy Easter and bat's over. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Eagle.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate Crystal on her recertification and congratulate Kathy Buck and Wendy Brink for recognition from the citizens and a job well done. Mr. Brown, just going to what Mr. Peterson said, when it gets time, can we send an email out to all the neighborhood association presidents about the council meeting with the rezoning in it and then maybe put something on Facebook too and we'll get it out as the best way we can?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. And I too attended the Lakes Area Luncheon today and, yeah, I thought that if I was there, I'd jump to Wixom because it looks like we're the only ones doing good things right now. And I just want to congratulate Deanna and Kathy and Cindy for a great Easter egg hunt this weekend. Was well-attended, a lot, a lot of young participants, which was encouraging and had a great time, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that was a lot of fun at the Easter egg hunt. You know, it's a fun, it's a real fast event, it takes place and then it's over, you know, the kids, you have the countdown and they run by you and it's, they're so cute, it's a lot of fun to see them do that. Yeah, the luncheon this afternoon and the speeches, I don't know about anybody else's speech, but I did notice that someone, I think it might have been Ron Moore, put a, put the speech on, my speech on the website, which shocked me frankly. I didn't know that was going to happen, but anyway, I didn't watch it, but you can. So, but yeah, everything's good, have a happy Easter and with that, I'll entertain